Council chambers Tuesday December 15th, 2015, 7:00 PM for the Southbridge School Committee meeting. Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Mr. Bishop?
Present.
Mrs. Congdon?
Excused.
Mr. Jovan?
Present.
Mr. Lazo?
Present.
Mr. Olivo?
Present.
Dr. Page?
Present.
Ms. Peliquin?
Present.
Six present, one excused.
We have a call to order. Moving on to the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Moving on to agenda item number three, public input. Is there anybody from the public that would have input to the school committee? Welcome.
Thank you.
Please identify yourself. Thank you.
I am Suzie Gears, Marcy Street, resident of Southbridge. I have a little open letter, I guess, to the state. I'm gonna take a little breath. Today, when I was preparing my words for tonight, I changed up the tone after I read the comments from the meeting in Malden today. Between a commissioner declaring this is a deeply concerning situation in Southbridge, and I don't see it writing itself, to my personal favorite of "The lights are on and no one is home," my maturity level went out the window, and clearly, the commenter's maturity as well. How dare the state? You have known for so long we have been a failing district, and all of a sudden, voila, we're gonna get down to business. Shame on you. You need to fix this, and all of a sudden, we're here to fix it. You've waited too long, and you've done nothing except dilly-dally. This has been going on for years. So thank you, all of you, for doing this. Thank you for pretty much our town imploding. Thank you. I also asked the state to maybe show up for the representatives that came for more than three minutes per classroom. You picked out the negative, there was nothing really positive in this report. I think I could count him on my one hand. As a new mom to the love of my life, you need to win back my trust, so in a few short years, I will send my daughter to this school system. To me, you have blood on your hands, as you have failed every child in this town. Although I don't blame the state entirely, as a former employee and staff member of the Southbridge Public School System, I can wholeheartedly say much, so much of the blame and responsibility relies, excuse me, lies with the central office staff. The staff, not all, are ineffective, angry, uncaring, and have an uncanny desire to rule by fear and bully tactics. A sheer refusal to take any blame or responsibility that when anything goes off, they say that it's not their responsibility, but they will take any commendation when anything good happens. Those that occupy those offices are hands down failing every student in this town and every employee that walks through these doors. It's a toxic, unhealthy, and unsupportive atmosphere, and I urge the state and this committee to please in the next few weeks, look at the job descriptions of every single employee there, line by line, and see exactly who is up to snuff and who isn't. And I have an idea on where to start. Also, it is time for these deadbeat parents to start manning up. There are children that are violent, they are the same children over and over, it's time to make these parents responsible. They happily ship their kids out to the school system for us to babysit. They could care less. These are repeat offenders in our school system, and it's time that they are either called into court and held accountable. Which leads to my next question. Why are these kids still at Southbridge High School? Why aren't they at an alternative high school? Who is in charge of that? I have a feeling it's because it's money. And that is why, one of the reasons our school is failing. I am heartsick for the students enrolled that come to school every day, hungry, exhausted, and not knowing where they will spend any night, because they don't have a home. And yes, we have that problem in Southbridge. And I do want those kids to know that we care. However, they wouldn't know that in this school, because where is the student support services? There is a gross lack of student support, and again, we know where that comes from, because the administrators are doing the best that they can with hardly any resources. And our ELL students, they are thrown in the same classroom with proficient English speakers. Why is that? We need separate classrooms. There's nothing wrong with it. We want each child to flourish, and they can't if they're grouped in the same classrooms together. In my days, that was allowed. You could have a bilingual class, you could have, that is not being segregated, it's trying to be equal and get them each to flourish. In closing, I wish, one thing that we truly do need is a good PR person. And I think this town, whether, when it's good news, bad news, we don't turn a Facebook and people's pages to find out what exactly is happening in town at our schools. We need somebody to control the flow and communication. I love this town. As anybody knows, I'm one of its biggest cheerleaders. But I'm tired of watching family and friends constantly get beat down by inadequacies. And closing, the lights are on at my house, to the state. The lights are on at my house, my neighbors, the teachers, the students, and the great people on this school committee. You, the state, and central office are the ones that are clearly not home. Thank you very much, and happy holidays.
Is there anybody else at this time that would like to address the school committee? Is there anybody else? If not, moving on to the approval of minutes. Agenda item number four, December 1, 2015, regular. Do I hear a motion?
So vote.
Or a second?
Second.
Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions to the minutes of that meeting? If none, all those in favor, opposed, unanimous of all present. Moving on to the chairperson's announcements. I'm gonna keep it brief, we have a lot in front of us tonight. I would just like to congratulate all the MCAS people on their awards tonight. Most of all, you parents that stepped it up, as they say, and are here tonight. I just wanna thank each and every one of you for the high accomplishments. Basically, I just wanna wish the school district and the town a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, this being the last many of the month. And we will reconvene on the 12th to continue the workings of the district. Moving on to presentations. Agenda item number six, MCAS awards, students in advanced on both math and ELA. Southbridge Middle High School students first. Jim?
Good evening. It's nice to see so many parents here and grandparents, but we always appreciate when you come out. And as the chairman mentioned, we know that the reason we're here is to recognize your sons and daughters for their outstanding achievements on the state test. So we thank you for that. We know if any time that schools and parents are working together, then our children benefit from that. We have both the high school and middle school principal here this evening, and I'm gonna call on the middle school principal and her assistant first. Ms. Sweetman, if you and Terry would come up, please. Ms. Sweetman will run out, one will read out the names, and we'll hand out the tickets. Children come up the center aisle and go back. Please be careful of the cords. And again, I just wanna thank the young people for their achievement, thank our teachers and administrators for providing an environment where they're able to achieve at the level that their parent want of them. I know that representatives from the state are here, and I'm sure they join us in seeing the number of youngsters that are here tonight, and hoping that it's always increasing. So thank you for being here as well. Who's gonna read your names?
So when your name is called, just please come forward and get recognized.
I'll now call on the high school principal and assistant principal to help in presenting the awards to the high school students who scored in excess of 260 on the language arts and math.
Good evening. I'm gonna start off with the certificates of excellence. There's the boys' first varsity basketball game tonight, so there's gonna be some students who are missing. Next, we have the recipients of the John and Abigail's Adam Scholarship. Congratulations, everyone.
If we could just do this as quickly as possible, could we have the middle school youngsters that received an award, please come up here so we can take a picture of you. And then after we do the middle school, then we'll do the high school. And parents, feel free to take pictures. We'll hold them up there for a couple of minutes for you. So all of the middle school folks, please come up.
Middle school students?
Middle school students.
Phone up.
And the school committee can stand up behind it. Thank you. Could we have the high school MCAS students next, please? No, just a high school MCAS, and then we'll do a scholarship.
All the high school MCAS, high school MCAS, come forward.
All right, anyone wanna get a picture of them, please? We're gonna take one as well. All set? Maybe if you form two rows, so some of the taller youngsters, please move to the back, please. Oscar, Hector, you can get to the back, go right ahead.
Again, we'd like to congratulate everybody. We're gonna take a five-minute recess in order to reorganize the committee. Call the school committee back into session. Moving on to agenda item number 6-3, Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education District Review Report. One, Rob Curtin, Director, Education Data Services and the Center of School and District Accountability. Rob, I welcome you and the contingency from the state. We saw you earlier today, and I missed you so much, I'm happy to see you back.
Yeah, well, thank you very much, Chairman Lazo, Superintendent Connors, for having me tonight to be able to present to you the district review report. As the chairman said, my name is Rob Curtin, and I was in charge of leading this review. Before I get into the presentation, I'd like to acknowledge some of the colleagues that are with me this evening. Senior Associate Commissioners Russell Johnston and Brooke Clenchey have joined me here. Laura Reshane from my staff, who has been in charge of the monitoring of the AIP in Southbridge, although not actually being the monitor, she supervised that monitoring. And also, I'd like to acknowledge Board of Elementary and Secondary Education member Mary Ann Stewart, who is with us this evening. I'm here tonight to present to you the findings of the district review report that was conducted. I'm going to deliver the same presentation that I delivered this morning to the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, mainly in the name of transparency, so that we are, you're clear, and the public and the citizens of Southbridge are clear in what has been told to the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. So please, don't take this as piling on in any way, that's the spirit in which I am offering it. So for those of you that heard it this morning, I appreciate you, just, you know, just your patience as I run through a couple of the first slides. As you all know, Southbridge was declared an underperforming district by the Board of Elementary, at that time, the Board of Education in 2004. Since 2012, Southbridge has been on an ESE monitored and managed accelerated improvement plan, and then there are some enrollment statistics down below that I don't need to go through in great detail, as you're all very familiar with them. As I've mentioned before and again, please don't take this as piling on, but there is grave concern about student achievement in the Southbridge Public Schools. Looking at the most recent data, when you look at the percentage of students district-wide that scored proficient or advanced on various state assessments, if you look at ELA, 41% of students scored proficient or advanced on the 2015 MCAS, and that was the second lowest percentage in the state, when you look at a comparison group of those districts that administered MCAS, and for those, many of you know that we administered two assessments in the state, MCAS in Park, Southbridge chose to administer MCAS. So when you think about, use a comparison group of those districts that administered MCAS in grades three through eight and in grade 10, Southbridge had the lowest, the second lowest percent proficient and advanced in the state in ELA. Similarly, they had, Southbridge students had the second lowest percentage of students scoring proficient and advanced in math, and the ninth lowest in science in the state. When we look at the other side of the achievement spectrum and think about the percentage of students that received a score of warning or failing, you'll notice that those, 26% of students in ELA, 39 in math and 36 in science, and those all represented the second highest percentage in the state of students scoring warning or failing. I have listed some school information there for you, I don't need to go into it in great detail. The one point, the one thing that I will point out on the school table is the school percentile on the far right. And what that does is, it takes all schools in a certain grade, in a certain grade span, so Charlton Street and West Street Schools would fit into the elementary school span. Okay? And the way to read the school percentile is that when we take into account the student achievement over four years and student growth over four years, the Charlton Street School is in the eighth percentile of all elementary schools in the state, the West Street School is in the third percentile of all elementary schools in the state, and Southbridge Middle High School is in the sixth percentile of all middle high schools in the state. That is alarming to us, and it exhibits extremely low student performance. and it exhibits extremely low student performance. In addition, if we take a look at some additional statistics about the district, the most recent graduation rate data showed a four-year graduation rate of just under 63%, significantly below the state rate of 86.1%. That represents a four-year graduation rate, the percentage of students that graduate within four years. When we look at the annual dropout rate, which looks at the percentage of students that drop out in one year, the most recent data in the 2014 school year show that 4.4% of students in grades nine through 12 dropped out of the Southbridge Public Schools. That is nearly, that is over twice the state rate of 2.0%. Further, in the 2015 school year, one in 10 students in the Southbridge Public Schools were suspended at least once. And when you look at just the Southbridge Middle High School, that number rises to almost one in five students received at least one suspension at some point through the 2000, in the 2015 school year. And when we look at how students are doing in their courses, over a third of students failed at least one course at the Southbridge Middle High School in 2015. These statistics are alarming to us, and we're not, again, and I'm not piling on here. I've mentioned a lot of these before, but certainly led us to having a great awareness about the district review that was happening in October. Speaking of that review, we conducted an onsite district review of the Southbridge Public Schools from October 19th to 22nd. That review was staffed by six independent reviewers. There were no Department of Elementary and Secondary Education staff here during that review. All of the reviewers are contractors of the department, but are not state employees with us. We conducted over 30 hours of interviews. We talked to over 110 people in the school district to gather their thoughts about the state of the Southbridge Public Schools. They included school committee members, administrators, teachers, city officials, and teachers' association representatives. One of the key tenets of our district review process is that we review classrooms. We go in and observe lessons in all of the schools in the district. It's one of the things that I require of our district review process. So we reviewed, we observed 68 classrooms across that week in all four schools. Following the review, there is a drafting process that goes on by the review team. It then comes to my office, who does some editing, copy editing mostly, on the report. The draft of the report is then transmitted to the superintendent of schools in Southbridge. And that was done on, I'm sorry, the date is escaping me, but it was the Monday of the Thanksgiving week. We transmitted the report to the superintendent of schools. At that time, we asked the superintendent to provide factual correction to the report. We offered the opportunity for the report to be shared with anybody in the school district that would need to have input to be able to provide complete factual correction. At the same time, we asked the district not to make it public, but to be able to share the report with anybody that needs to make it any factual corrections. We received factual corrections from Superintendent Connors. Those were transmitted to me in the first week of December. We accepted all of the factual corrections that were provided by the school district. We then finalized the report and released it publicly, both to the, we sent it to the school district last Tuesday, I believe, and then released it publicly last Wednesday. This morning, I presented the findings of the report to the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, and I'm here tonight to present the findings to you. As I've mentioned in my previous visits, our district reviews are conducted on six standards. They are leadership and governance, curriculum instruction, assessment, human resources and professional development, student support, and financial and asset management. You'll notice that this aligns nicely with the number of reviewers that we send to the school district. We have an expert in each one of the standard areas. And the review is coordinated by one of the people that is on the team. That was done by Linda Grazer. And you can find the list of names of all the people that conducted the review in Appendix A of the report. What I'm going to do today, or tonight, is to run through some of the findings in each one of these standards. I assume that most of you have had the opportunity to see the report and to review it. I will not go into excruciating detail, but my job tonight is to answer any questions that you have. And I'll stand up here as long as that takes to answer any questions, however detailed you might want to be with those questions. Let me talk for one second about the structure of our report, so that the slides make sense. The way that the report is structured, for those that have seen it, is that within each standard, there are four parts. The first is a contextual standard, where we provide sort of an overview of the standard. The second is there are an area where we commend strengths or promising practices. The third is where we identify challenges or areas for growth. And the fourth is where we provide recommendations based upon the areas of growth that have been identified. You'll notice that the slides tonight are set up to speak about the strengths and the challenges that have been, the strengths and promising practices and challenges that have been identified. So I'm going to run through each one of the standards and take it in that order, both strength, promising practice, and then challenge, area for growth. In the area of leadership and governance, there were no strengths or promising practices identified by the review team. There were significant challenges offered in the report, and I'd like to talk about those now. The leadership and governance standard challenge focused primarily on the role of the school committee. The report focuses on the school committee's adherence to its traditional roles and responsibilities. I do want to note, and I've had conversations with district officials, and I do want to note that the review looked at some dealings of the school committee prior to the election of this school committee, and that should be acknowledged. But it also looked at some of the dealings of the school committee after the election of the school committee. So it is looking in totality at the recent dealings of the school committee, but it should be acknowledged that it crosses over an election time. The first big challenge or area for growth that was identified is the influence of the school committee on daily operations of the school district. There were several examples given dealing with the school committees' dealings with financial aspects within the school committee, personnel decisions that are made in the school committee. Of note is the school committee's failure to conduct a formal superintendent search since 2010. That spans over the course of several school committees, including the present one. In addition, in the report, it was noted that there has been an erosion of public confidence in the school committee's ability to direct the Southbridge Public Schools. This was highlighted by a letter of no confidence from the town council to the school committee. It should be noted, to be clear, that this was prior to the most recent election. So you're talking about a different, some different configuration of the school committee. But I think it speaks to the larger issue of the erosion of public confidence in the school committee to direct the Southbridge Public Schools. A large point brought up in the leadership and governance section is around the Southbridge Public Schools' failure to attract and retain key leadership. It is, when we talk about the stability of a school district and the ability to turn around a school district, without that stability, without stability in leadership, the report has found that it is almost impossible to be able to enact some of the initiatives that are planned for. I've incorporated a chart into the PowerPoint presentation that exhibits this instability in key leadership positions in the school district since 2011. There, these nine positions that are listed up here, there have been 43 individuals that have held those leadership positions since 2011, including seven superintendents. Since this school committee took over, there have been three superintendents. So it's clear that there is not stable leadership in the Southbridge Public Schools over the last several years. And even at the moment, in the midst of a superintendent search, the stability does not exist. Moving on to curriculum instruction. Once again, there were no strengths or promising practices identified by the review team in the area of curriculum instruction. There were several areas identified as challenges and areas for growth. Namely, there is an incomplete development and alignment of curriculum across the district, particularly at the middle high school. You'll notice that in Appendix E, I believe, I've listed out a chart for you in the review that talks about, that gives the state of the curriculum development in the district in English, math, and science. And you'll notice that from grades six through 12, the development is incomplete across the board. It should be noted that there has been development and some curriculum completed at the elementary level, but not across all of the subjects. As I mentioned, the district review team conducts classroom observations. They go in and look at lessons being delivered to students in Southbridge. They are in the classrooms for approximately 20 minutes, somewhere in the 20 minutes to, you know, as low as 20, sometime 25-minute range. They try to get in as many classes as they possibly can. There is excruciating detail provided in the report about the lack of academic challenge and well-structured lessons at the middle high school that were observed by our district review team. I should add that on last Friday, the commissioner, myself, and another colleague from the ESE visited the Southbridge Middle High School. And I concur with the commissioner when he says that nothing he saw that day disputed anything that he had read in the district review report. A significant challenge across the district, and it fits into the curriculum instruction, and we'll also talk about it on the student support side, is the limited, and I use, and it's very limited, differentiation of instruction district-wide. When we talk about, in the student support standard, we'll talk about supports that are provided to different subgroups of students. But our district reviewers observed very small amounts of differentiation of instruction in the classrooms that they observed. In fact, especially at the middle high school, they observed primarily teacher-centric instruction, the teachers delivering the instruction, and very little student engagement at the middle high school. In addition, the classroom, the district review team in the classrooms that they observed had significant concerns about the climate in some of the classrooms that they were in, disruptive behavior. And obviously, when we talk about the high suspension rates, there's a direct relationship between those two things. Moving on to the assessment standard. The assessment standard is when we look at the use of assessment in the school district. Also, this is where we look at things around data use and technology. Here, there was a promising practice and strength identified by the district review team. And that is around the use of data to guide curricular and instructional decisions at the elementary level. The review team was impressed with what they have seen in terms of the common planning time and the teams that were gathering to talk about data to be able to guide decisions to impact students and the education that they're going to receive. However, there were significant challenges in areas for growth identified in this standard. Namely, a district-wide assessment system that can be used to measure progress and to guide decision-making has not been implemented completely in the Southbridge Public Schools. I understand, and have spoken to you before, about the transition that Southbridge is making in the assessment system that they're using. But we have not seen that implementation done. And also, there was concern expressed by the review team about the level of training that staff had used, that staff had received about the new assessment system at the time of the visit. If staff are not trained in it, then it's going to be challenging for them to make decisions that are going to impact students based on the results. Further, the review team found that there is no coordinated data use expectations from the district. So when we talk about a data use strategy to inform instruction, okay, and this goes beyond using data for scheduling purposes, we're talking about how to use data to inform instruction to be able to make decisions about the best interests of students and where additional assistance is needed. There is no district-wide strategy around data use in the Southbridge Public Schools. In addition, there is, the review team found that there was insufficient time devoted to data use at the middle school, high school. In contrast with the elementary school, at the elementary level, where we talked about where the staff are provided time to look at data, to be able to use it effectively, to be able to influence their decisions about instruction for students, that time is not provided to educators at the middle school, high school. Lastly, there is no district-wide technology plan. And staff have inconsistent access to technology. And what that means is different, staff in the same roles have access to different levels of data. So teachers might have access to a building-level data. They might, other teachers might have access to classroom-level data and student-level data. And the review team noted that consistent access to data, where everybody has access to the same data, would benefit them greatly in the planning process to be able to help the students of the Southbridge Public Schools. In the HR and professional development standard, here again, the review team noted strengths and areas of promising practice. And that is around the implementation of the educator evaluation system. And we have noted this to you previously in our quarterly progress reports, that the educator evaluation system was implemented, the implementation was done well. And beyond the initial implementation, where just getting it up and running, part of our district review process is that we randomly review 25 evaluations of staff in the school district. Okay? And the district review team found those reviews to be done very well. And that's a significant step in the implementation of an effective educator evaluation system. They were done well, the feedback was done well. So the report noted those strengths around educator evaluation. Unfortunately, there's a related challenge and area for growth. And that is around the continuous evolve, the evolving of the educator evaluation system. Southbridge has failed to, beyond the initial implementation and getting the evaluations done and having them done well, they've failed to add the required components under the educator evaluation regulations. And that primarily deals with the components of staff and student feedback that are required under the regulations. Those have not been implemented by the Southbridge Public Schools. On the professional development side, the review team was, as the report indicates, disheartened about the professional development program in the Southbridge Public Schools. There is no comprehensive professional development plan, no activities calendar with goals and objectives. And particularly, the report notes that teachers, educators themselves that will be receiving the professional development have a very limited role in the planning process around what professional development will be offered. Moving to the student support standard. In this standard, again, there were no strengths or promising practices identified. I think it's fair to say that some of the largest concerns in this, in the district review report, at least in my opinion, are in this student support standard. There is no district-wide tiered system of support for students in Southbridge. There have been attempts There have been attempts made to do so. There have been flow charts developed. But there has not been enough invested in training of staff from a district-wide perspective to be able to effectively implement a tiered system of support. This is illustrated by the classroom climate and disruptive behavior leading to the 19% of students that were suspended last year, at least once, at the middle high school. One of the most significant findings in the report is that largely speaking, the needs of English-language learners, at 17% of the Southbridge student population, the needs of those English-language learners are largely being ignored. There is, as I mentioned, there is limited differentiation of instruction for English-language learner. The district is out of compliance with ELL regulations as it relates to the SEI endorsement in terms of being able to support English-language learners. There is insufficient staffing to be able to support the English-language learner population in the Southbridge Public Schools. For example, at the high school, there is one ELL position currently. And my understanding is that it's vacant for an ELL teacher. In the classrooms that were observed, the support was lacking for ELLs. And I can even further attest, what I saw on Friday was, again, insufficient support for English-language learners in classrooms that were observed. Finally, on the finance and asset management standard, there were two strengths and promising practices noted in this standard. The first is around the maintenance of the schools and the quality of the school buildings that the Southbridge Public School students are in. I can tell you from firsthand experience, from being in the Southbridge Middle High School last Friday, it is a beautiful building. And one that is ready to meet the needs from a facilities perspective of the Southbridge Public Schools. Secondly, the report noted the existence of a strong capital plan, looking forward and planning for some things that are going to be needed in capital areas. And that was heartening to see. Of course, it's a plan, and it would need to be followed through. But the first step is the existence of that strong capital plan. On the challenge and area for growth side, there was concern from the review team, and it was expressed by interviewees, around some of the financial management and the reporting that has been done. My understanding is that the district is trying to take steps to correct that problem. And the report did note, even while noting it as a challenge in an area for growth, that interviewees noted in some improvement recently. Finally, the report noted that there has been decreasing financial support from the town. And let me just take a minute to explain this and what is meant here by the statement presented in the presentation. There is no doubt that the Southbridge Public Schools is exceeding net school spending in terms of where their spending is currently in the current fiscal year. However, that percentage over net school spending has decreased significantly over time, while the needs of the Southbridge Public School population have increased. So with the increase of English-language learners, with an increase of special education students, okay? The needs of the population have increased, and the support, while over net school spending, has decreased. And I would be remiss, it was pointed out to me today, and I want to be, you know, as fair as possible here. One of the corrections that we received in the area of financial management was to note that the current finance director, while not certified at the time of the onsite review, has received that certification since then. And we noted that in the report. I'd like to acknowledge the fact that it was mentioned twice in the report that the finance director was not certified. And it was my fault. I did not correct it in the second place. So I apologize for that oversight, especially to you, Mr. Latoya. So that is my overview of the district review report. I would be happy to take any questions you might have, either on the process, any of the standards, or any of the concerns that you might have.
School committee members, anybody have any comments or any questions? Dr. Page?
Yeah, I'd like to thank you, Rob, for coming out once again and telling us, in my opinion, to a large degree, a lot of things that we already do know. And we are cognizant of a lot of the challenges that we have before us, having said that. One of the things that I find a little bit interesting about this summary, and I want to get some clarification on this, because you're saying that through this classroom evaluation process that went on, there was not one single incidence where anybody observed anything positive about the way our teachers were delivering instruction. That's basically what this says. I want to make sure I get that right. And my follow-up to that is, is we've had people and consultants and so forth from the state advising our advisors, advising our district leadership team on how to implement these kinds of practices. I know for a fact that our superintendents and interim superintendents, acting superintendents, whether they are directors of curriculum or teaching and learning and all of this, have been doing classroom walkthroughs, assessing, doing all of this kind of stuff for years.
Yep.
I'm struggling to figure out where the breakdown is, in the sense that are Southbridge teachers don't listen? Or are people not being told what to do, to deal with it? I mean, you have to understand, it's very frustrating for me, after sitting here for a whole year last year, hearing all of this stuff about differentiation of instruction and how important it is, all this kind of stuff. And you guys come out and don't cite one incidence of seeing it in 64 classrooms or whatever? I mean, that's just alarming to me as well.
Right. So I appreciate that question, and let me be clear. You know, as the presentation states, and as the report states, there was limited amounts of differentiation of instruction, okay? I would encourage you to take a look at Appendix B, I believe, which gives, where we actually provide you all the classroom observation data. So we have all the percentages right there of what exactly was seen. And it's certainly not that the answer was zero. I think the firmest statement that I made was in support for ELLs. But when we're talking about differentiation of instruction, I think I qualified it, and as the presentation did, with limited. And I think that is born in the data that you see in Appendix B. In terms of the involvement of the state and what that has led to, you know, I think we have had to reflect a little bit on, you know, what our role has been and what the interventions that we've been having here in Southbridge. And I think one of the conclusions that I've come to, and it's not the end-all-be-all, it's not the only answer, is that, you know, our accelerated improvement planning process that we've used really depends upon stability at both the district, the school committee, the district, and the building leader level. And if that stability doesn't exist, then in essence, you're starting over too many times. And it's difficult for the culture to change in a district, even in a building, without that stability and leadership. And, you know, and we have to reflect upon, you know, what we've done in terms of whether or not we've, you know, what we could do differently. And I think that's a process that we're willing to go through.
I'll yield to somebody else. If somebody else has a question or comment, I think I may have one more.
Thank you, Mr. Curtin. Thank you for your presentation, and I appreciate you being here today.
My pleasure.
First off, I know you were here the last time. And publicly, I just, again, want to apologize for the discourse that we had at that last meeting.
No need.
Well, I think it is needed, and I think I expressed it off-camera, but for the public's knowledge too, is the frustration that I personally have as a school committee member, just being here four to five months when this review took place. As I've communicated, I was on the school committee for 10 years? Seven as the chairman up until 2012. So I own a lot of the materials that were before 2012. And I reflect back that we hired a superintendent by the name of Dale Hanley, Dr. Dale Hanley, that had come in with a lot of thoughts on curriculum development, professional development, how to build that into the budget. And as a school committee with my colleagues here, Mr. Lauso, I think, was the only other member that would be on at that time. Mr. Bishop certainly was the principal at the school. So at that time, we did have that team approach on that professional development piece that I found in this report. And at that time was my frustration, and is my frustration still. Because we developed professional development plans. We committed hundreds of thousands of dollars in the budget to that professional development plan. I then look at the snapshot, and really, it's a snapshot of 2012 to 2015, where some of those plans have gone awry. And you're absolutely right, stability in the district. The one thing I would like clarified, and unfortunately, I didn't catch it earlier, is the PowerPoint that there's been no search process since 2010. While in the face of that, that is a correct statement, but we had a search process. We appointed a superintendent in 2010 that was relieved in 2013. So really, it's reflective of, there's been no search process since 2012, 13. Because the last search was 2010. That was a comprehensive search. We used MASC. We went out to NezDak. We did the, you know, people may not be happy with the search and how it ended up, but there was a search.
So my apologies if I wasn't clear in that, and perhaps I should have been. I think the statement is acknowledging that the 2010 search was a comprehensive search. So I'm saying since that time, there has not been another one. Since that last search.
But effectively, we had a superintendent until 2012 when they left. So from that period of time, 2012 to present,
Sure.
We can't excuse that.
Yes.
But it really has been that time period that they did not put the search. And my reason for that comment, Mr. Curtin, is the fact that publicly, I had gone out back 2012, and said publicly, that until we hire the permanent leader for the district, we are not going to be able to sustain those changes.
Sure.
Because you're absolutely right, and I've said it publicly throughout the years, that a principal and a teacher is not going to have buy-in into what an interim superintendent is going to say. Because is that interim superintendent going to be there? And in reflection of that, when we look back as a school committee, and me personally, when we brought Mr. Connors here and we moved Ms. Stanton from the interim superintendent position back down to her assistant superintendent position, that was the thoughtful process, and that's not reflected in the report, when we tried to communicate that to your review team, was the fact that she had written and headed up the AIP plan. And the reflection of our school committee since July, since I was here in 2015, was the fact that that plan was so important that the Department of Ed had thought that that plan was so, thought it had good roots to it, that it was important for us to take her to the role that she would be most beneficial and to find an interim superintendent that could manage the rest of the district so that that leadership plan could be, that AIP could be put into place.
Right.
So that was the thought process. We moved Mr. Latoy into a finance position because he had knowledge of the district. He had financial background and a knowledge of our budget. So everything that we did since July was trying to be thoughtful of how best to maintain the stability in the district. We have three elementary school principals and middle school associate principal that were teachers in this district that have lived and breathed for years and years the challenges that our students have. They're brand-new principals. They need mentor, and they need a stable. So our job now as a school committee, as we sit back now, we had a bump in the road with the appointment of Mr. Bliss. And I think if we were to sit down and actually have an honest conversation with the board about the thought process of why we thought at the time he may be a good fit for the district. And if you were here, and I don't mean disparaging, but if you were here when the parents and the staff saw Mr. Bliss come back into the district, there was a lot of positive energy that finally, we could get things moving, moving the pieces in the right direction. That didn't work out. So now, as we sit here now, is, we're at a crossroads. What do we do now? Because there are certain factors in this. As a school committee, we sit here, and I think we're on the same page. We've had this conversation, you and I, off-camera. We are all in this for what's best for the kids of Southbridge. We want to make the best decisions that we possibly can for the kids of Southbridge and the district.
Absolutely.
That's our goal. That's my goal. I don't have any kids left in the district. They're gone. They're doing very well. But my wife is a school bus driver. She deals with these students every day on the bus. We know the challenges of our social-economic position that we are in. And when I came back in July and we talked about the ELL issue, I very pointedly said, "Well, where's our ELL director? Why don't we have a director? Let's fill that position. Let's see what we can do." We were told as a brand-new school committee now, four of us on this, we can't fill that position. Why not? Because we eliminated the position. Why would we eliminate an ELL position as a school district with that high of a population of ELLs? It's because instead of addressing the problem with the employee, we make bad decisions and eliminate positions, just like we did with the middle school, high school, going back three or four years ago. Why? Because we don't like the person. We eliminate a position, and we cause chaos. We, as a school committee and with the Department of Ed, need to sit down together and what is the best plan to move forward? So I think as a school committee, we identify social and economic. We've had our school committee meetings coming back from the AMASC, social-emotional needs of our students, high population. We all know what those needs are. And now, we're trying to look at the budget and say, where is the money being spent in the budget so we can reallocate resources? So I guess, long-winded to this point would be, where do we go from here? Because some of the comments that I saw come out of the board meeting this morning, are they alarming? Yes. Are we working on a plan? Yes. Do we want stability? Absolutely. How do we, now, we're in the midst of a superintendent's search. We don't know, I don't personally know how many people applied for that position. But how do we move forward as a school committee to appoint a new superintendent and vet candidates out to say, "Hey, this is what we want," if this commissioner is sitting there going, "Well, Level 5 receivership's not on the table"? How do we address that stability? And we need an answer, because we need to be able to move forward and identify the proper leader for our district.
Sure. Let me, you know, as far as the Level 5 process, you know, my job here is to conduct a district review that gives the commissioner enough information to make a decision about a next step. But there's a process to that, and you heard his comments this morning. But I'll let Senior Associate Commissioner Russell Johnson talk a little bit about the process.
Absolutely. Thank you. Really, what I wanted to say is that, as a result of today's meeting, the board did take, under consideration, the report that Rob presented. They're obviously thinking about what next steps might look like. I anticipate that I might be able to have, what I'd like to see happen, is that I would follow up and suggest a meeting between us, meaning Mr. Lauso, Mr. Connors, myself, early next week, so that we can talk about this very important process that you're going through right now in terms of the superintendent's search. Because I think I would like to be able to engage in further dialogue with you about what our intentions are, where the department is going, what next steps might look like. And if I have more confirmation of that, that could help you in your planning process. So I anticipate that tomorrow, I would follow up with the two of you. So I anticipate that tomorrow I would follow up with the two of you to talk about maybe a meeting early next week so that we can get that on the books.
Any other discussion by any school committee members?
I was at the meeting in Malden this morning, and thank you for coming here again tonight.
My pleasure.
I appreciate your work on this. I've heard a lot of questions this afternoon from people asking me, since the commissioner said that Level Five is not off the table.
Right.
There's a lot of questions in town about, like, what Level Five would look like? How does that affect our teachers? How does that affect employees? How does that affect our local tax rates?
Yep.
And there's a lot of questions in town about that. And as a board member, I don't feel like I'm sufficiently educated to be able to answer those types of questions.
Right. And I think part of the process, and again, the commissioner has not made a recommendation, but part of the process is that depending on whatever his decision is, whether that means to remain in Level Four receivership, whatever that process is, is to provide additional information to all of your constituents, right? We have an obligation as a board-designated Level Four district, or if receivership comes to play, that we provide as much information as we can to both the employees and the citizens of Southbridge about the course of action that's being taken.
So you'll tell us more later, basically?
Yeah. I mean, I think, like I said, you know, we're coming off the board meeting this morning. I think the commissioner is going through that thought process at the moment. And like Senior Associate Commissioner Johnson said, you know, we're going to begin conversations about how to move forward with an appropriate course of action.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Jack, is something going? Just as a follow-up. I just want to convey to the Department of Ed that myself, and I share this, I believe, with all my colleagues, that we are committed to working with the Department of Ed to make effective changes in a partnership agreement.
Right.
To, you know, because a part of this is, I think, on, one of the presentations online was that the district did not, in reviewing some of the information online, there was one thing, the district has at various times taken advantage of the regional district and school assistance, DSAC.
Yep.
But it's not leveraged to the full extent of the services available. So I guess, I would like maybe some documentation from, or feedback from you as to what were those services and when they were offered to the district that we didn't take advantage of and how that may have affected.
Sure.
Because I think that's important. You're absolutely right. I think the Department of Ed is right. When it comes down to governance, I certainly know roles and responsibilities of the school committee. It's been embedded in us for many years. And we do have oversight over budget and policy. We've worked hard on the policy angle. We work hard on the budget angle. And I think, I don't get involved in the day-to-day operations of the school district, but then we're held accountable for what the lack of curriculum isn't developed. Because it would be very easy for me, as a school committee member, to say, "Mr. Superintendent, I would like a full report, detailed timeline as to curriculum development." I could say that tomorrow, but then we would be overstepping our bounds. So that's where that balance comes. We're held accountable that, hey, our government, and we're not involved, but then if we get too deep, so it's a fine line. We do have the chairman of the council here. We have forged the good working relationship with the town. The town, as every town, has financial limitations.
Right.
So just like the state and everybody else.
Sure.
So I think the town's been doing, in fairness to the town, they've done the best they can to balance it. But I look forward to seeing how we can work together.
And just to follow up on the first point, I will have my office send through the superintendent more information about the services offered by the district and school assistance centers.
That we did not take advantage.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I would just like to open up a dialogue right here because Tim and I sat down after the meeting and all points well-taken on the report. I'm not going to sit here and say, "No, this is right." That's, Rob, the state has a job to do. What I learned today, and I didn't know, was usually I look at Boston as a bunch of bureaucrats, like the House of Representatives, and they have a bad taste in their mouth right away. They don't like their government. But what I noticed today with the commissioner and the crew at the table, the Department of Education, was the compassion they have for the kids. They don't care about any politics. They don't care about anybody's feelings. They worry about what goes on in that classroom. I salute them. I've been in government off and on. I usually run when there's trouble. If they need to build a school, I was chairman of the building committee. I was chairman of the council. I came to the school committee with Jack, and we did a turnaround, and we got the superintendent on, and we headed in the right direction. And we built a new $75 million school. Hope and vision, everything was happening. Went into an accelerated program. The school committee changed. It's been a downfall since the change. It's been a lot of personalities. It wasn't about those kids in that classroom anymore. It was all about who was going to win the personality conflict. And obviously, they won because a lot of the former members weren't there. But to the point of stability, I ran with Mr. Bishop, and we turned around and put an action plan together that we were going to start a search committee immediately. And we did. And we also made a lot of promises on what we thought we should see. Now, the town government that voted a no vote of confidence on the school committee was on the previous school committee, which we all know. But the good thing about now is, we've got a new town manager that's pro-education. We sat down with him immediately when we sat down with the superintendent, and we looked and we talked with him. His palms up, immediately there was like $200,000 for textbooks, and, "Guys, what do you need? You got to let me know. You know, we don't have, you know, the big bankroll, but we're there for you." The chairman of the council and the vice chairman. We have a relationship right now probably better than, you'd have to go back 10 years in order to see this town-school relationship. It's one team on one stage, ready to go. I get on and I go into the front office, and this is why I told Tim, "We should go to Boston with a few people and tell our compelling story of the turn of events." And as Mr. Jovan touched, and I'm going to try not to repeat myself, Mr. Jovan touched on the history.
Yep.
And what happens is, I land and they postpone the reorganization. School's opening the 26th of August. So they postpone the reorganization. They postponed again. All of a sudden, the council has appointed some of these members here. And they appointed members understanding, you know, to move the agenda. So the whole school committee, it's like five new members or four new members, along with three members that were on, and they were in the minority forever on the committee. I land on the 14th. They appoint me the chairman. I walk in the front office, and I'm looking for a Cheryl Stanton interim superintendent, which her contract ended on June 30th, so July 14th, she's no longer, she's back at assistant superintendent curriculum. So I said, "Well, where is Ms. Stanton?" And they said, "Well, she's on extended vacation that was given by the former chairman to the 26th of August." 26th of August, school's opening. I have enough knowledge to turn around and say, "Do we have a search? How much window dressing do we put on this?" Well, I got to be honest with you. We had a guy, Mr. Bliss, who put a resume in before I even got on to the committee and said, he outreach to the district as a former employee. He had experience, eight years at Dover Sherborn as a superintendent, fantastic, we had credentials. He lands, and in eight weeks, he rebuilds the administrative cabinet. We had no principal at Chalm Street, no principal at West Street, and no finance director. And when we requested the line item budget, there was no such thing. So what do we do? Well, we wanted stability, just like the state wanted. So what we did was, we said, "Let's stop moving these chess pieces around." They keep moving them around, the previous school committee, to the point where we had vacancies and weaknesses. Cheryl Stanton is the curriculum person. She was doing the visit. She concentrated on that. Steve Bliss concentrated on being the superintendent. He built the administrative team. They are all in place. We're very satisfied. He split the middle school, went back to the old reorganization plan, and Tim will complete that. And we picked up a fine administrator at the middle school. So now, we're poised to move forward. The visit is going on. The worst thing in the world for this district right now is the boogeyman. Are they taking us over? Aren't they? Teachers are jumping ship. Administrators don't know whether they're coming or going. So, you know, I really think, sitting down with the commissioner or whoever the powers should be on the committee, the compassion that the Department of Ed had at the table, they were concerned about Southbridge's kids, worried about Southbridge's politics. I like that. I think that's the merit of the board. And I think we are on the same playing field as far as we want to work as a team. I don't want to sit here and say, "You're wrong." We have issues here. We know the last three years have been a disaster. We know curriculum's not happening, professional development. But you have members up here that know what a turnaround plan looks like. They know what the implementation of curriculum and professional development.
Right.
Especially evaluation tool. We have experience in that area where, not that we're going to do it, but at least we know what it looks like when Tim turns around and says, "We're going to be implementing this, this, and this."
Yep.
At the same time that this is going on, we have a full-blown superintendent search. We have a tremendous pool of candidates right now. The last thing we need is the boogeyman to chase all these people away. And tomorrow night, we have a meeting, and we're going to be sitting down, and we're going to be going through a community, a committee that was put together by the community. We advertised, people applied. We tried our darndest to try and get parents involved on it. We have a cross-section of businesspeople, administrators from the system that really know what superintendent's supposed to look like. So that's why, when there's a journey, I talked about a journey when we opened the school district, even Pat Jackman was there, and Williams, and Sally Dias. And the opening day was optimism and hope. Everybody was cranked up to move forward. And then Mr. Bliss took ill, or whatever happened, and then we had to hit the button again and get the search, keep going with the search. We have a hiccup. We don't quit on the kids. So I think where we are right now is, I wanted to formulate a letter with Tim and to come to Boston and to give this compelling story of, "You really want to take us over, or do you want to partner with us? If you want to take us over, let's stop the meetings. Just take us over." Because you've got to stop the mass exodus of the qualified people. There will be nobody here to work. And I think that's what we're really concerned with as a school committee. And I know that I don't have to speak for the people around me, but I just have to get that history out there that...
I appreciate that.
We had empty buildings. If I didn't make that move with Bliss, we would have opened this on the 26th, there would have been no finance director due to budget. There would have been no principal at two buildings. What would that have looked like at the state level? It would have looked like a disaster. So I thought, providing that strong leadership you asked for. Grab the bull by the horns. Let's get the job done. And we'll worry about the spanking later. I don't mind you spanking me. So I think that's where we are, and I think that's where we have to move forward. Now, looking at the people at the table today, I think we have a shot at making a difference here. It's just a matter of what the flavor is at the commissioner's level and the board.
Right.
Is there any other discussion? If not, I'd like to thank you and the contingency. You can bring Ms. Clinchy anytime. She's the only one that smiles on the group.
Thank you all very much for the opportunity tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, and I'll look forward to talking to you in a way, in a way, in a way. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, moving forward, moving on to reports, agenda item number seven, school committee negotiation subcommittee.
No report, and as noted previously, all contracts are current with all units.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Policy, Mr. Jovan.
As I stated last meeting, we will pick up meetings after the new year. No report.
Moving on to budget and finance subcommittee, Dr. Page.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Budget and finance subcommittee meeting met last Wednesday, December 9th. We discussed several items, three or four of which all were forwarded to the school committee, so you'll see those later on. I'm not going to review them here. The only other thing was with the superintendent and the finance director, we had a discussion of the timeline and process for the FY '17 budget preparation cycle. Several documents were distributed to us for information in terms of how the principals and district leaders will be preparing the needs-based budget requisition from each of the buildings going forward for the consideration of the school committee. We'll pick up on probably another meeting after the holidays. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Superintendent's search. We'd just like to comment, the chairman is not here. She's in Texas. I'd like to just inform everybody, tomorrow we have a meeting on the superintendent's search at room 100. The process is going full-tilt. I'm very optimistic in looking at, I am on the committee, I'm very optimistic in looking at the pool that we have, is getting me very excited about the experience and the people that want to come to Southbridge and pitch in for this team concept. So tomorrow night, we have the superintendent's search. Moving on to student representative to the school committee, Diego Royal.
Hello, everyone. Okay. So winter sports are underway. The first homecoming basketball game is actually tonight, and the next one is this Friday. Five o'clock at the school is junior varsity, and seven o'clock is the varsity game. December 23rd is the first day of vacation. It's a full day of school. And January 4th is the day we're all going to be coming back, unfortunately. The additions for Grease the Musical will be held tomorrow after school. And student council will be selling candy cane grams for only a dollar. And we're also planning a semi-formal winter dance in February. And Sheriff Lou Evangelides, yeah, collected all the coats from the coat drive and met with the students from student council. He gave souvenirs to all the students, and the students, in exchange, gave him a Southbridge Middle High School winter cap. The giving tree for student council was a success. And next Tuesday, National Honor Society and student council is hosting a staff breakfast for all the staff in the building. National Junior Honor Society had inductions yesterday night, and it was a pretty good ceremony. Middle school student council had a bake sale, and all the money raised went to Toys for Tots. National Honor Society is offering tutoring sessions for an hour every Wednesday after school in room 251. National Honor Society is holding its second annual toy drive. It ends December 18th. We are asking students and staff to donate unwrapped toys in the middle high school main Wednesday, December 23rd, National Honor Society is holding a adopt a senior fundraiser. It is a silent auction, and students and staff will bid for the day with a senior providing service for them. On April 15, 2016, National Honor Society will hold a Stop Hunger Now event. National Honor Society members will package over 10,000 meals to be handed out worldwide. In order to meet this goal, NHS will need to raise $3,000 to purchase the items necessary. Donations can be made online through the Southbridge Middle High School Facebook page or through Mr. Moderosian's class webpage. For any more information, you can just contact Mr. Moderosian, the advisor of National Honor Society. And one thing, I appreciate all of you guys working so hard, and I have complete faith that you guys will turn this district around.
Thank you. Any questions of the rep? If no questions, moving on, finance director. Bill?
Good evening. There's a couple items coming up on the agenda from the finance office that we've been working on. Superintendent Connors and I are working on the upcoming budget preparation, and we'll be meeting with the building leaders and department heads to an open budget process. We have finalized our agreements with the YMCA in the building. The Head Start Amendment for the lease has been finalized, and that's been executed in place as well. We're working hard to make sure that we're getting all the information that we can. Some things that we've done is, we've gone out to bid on oil already for the next budget season so that we have that in place. A couple of the copier leases that you'll find on the upcoming budget, on the upcoming votes, are also going to save us some money, so we're already starting to work hard so that we can prioritize where we're going to put that money. One thing that we'll be doing as well in the upcoming week, this is more on the operation ends, but it speaks to the Alice training we'll be doing in the district. And the Alice training is a, it's more of a supplemental piece to the traditional lockdown. Several districts around are already participating in it. We'll be joining with them. We'll be participating with our local police department during the break to familiarize our administrators with that. Then we'll take the training back to the buildings and implement it fully within the buildings. We'll have a presentation for the school committee as well, once we're further into that.
Any questions of the finance director? If not, moving on to superintendent's report. Tim Connors.
We don't want to get in trouble with the public service because they do a great job. Bill left off, the fire department will also participate. One of the nice things is, sitting here as superintendent, we listen to adults all night. But Diego, thank you for your comments about the board. And I know, as I walk through the schools, that our kids think that their schools are doing well. And I know that this board, like the commissioner of education, cares about children. The other thing I hope that you heard, Russell Johnson, I think, heard the commissioner's comments, and that's why he's going to be speaking to us, because you two are on the same wave, that we need to talk before we act. And... And, and I just appreciate the board's listening, taking under advisement, along with all of our staff out there, representatives from the state that work hard with us every day, that we're going to move forward. I know that the board is going to hire a superintendent, and I want to mention, in terms of the budget that Bill and I are putting together, most of the things that they talk about with the elves and those kinds of things, we had a good conversation around that at the finance committee meeting. We're going to put those things in, we certainly have to prioritize them, but we're going to do those things that are necessary so that we can all be proud in not only what we do to help children, but more importantly, that our children are achieving like the young people we saw here tonight. So I think that's a good note. I'd like to just talk about a child and a teacher for a moment, and maybe that will get us into this holiday spirit. The principal over at West Street, Catherine, sent me a little note, and she had called me first, and she said, "Hi, Tim, just a follow-up on our conversation about one of our second graders who was choking on a chicken nugget today in their cafeteria." The student began, knew what to do in terms of giving the universal sign, "I'm choking." One of our teachers that was there, Kate Thompson, knew what to do when she saw that, she went over and used the Himmelschmidt method and solved the problem, we notified the parent, the kid was happy, we're proud of the teacher, we're proud of the kid for knowing that, and there are great things that happen in our schools every day, and yes, do we have challenges? Well, that's why we're in school, to learn. And, and I know that people work hard to do that. On Thursday night, we have the concert up at the school, I know the middle school had theirs last night, and I couldn't make that, or last Thursday, but I hope people will get up and see the high school concert and choir, that'll be a good evening, and there are awards over at your school tomorrow night. So we're constantly recognizing our students, working hard to do the best that we can for this community, and I know everybody's going to go off to the holidays and come back, and 2016 is going to be a great year for the Southbridge School District. That's my report.
Thank you. Any questions of the superintendent? If there are no questions, the superintendent will go on to agenda item number eight, school committee action. Vote to approve and award the French River Educational Collaborative Bid for fuel oil for the 2016-2017 fiscal year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Or a second?
Second.
Motion and second discussion. No discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Eight-two, vote to allow the finance director to enter into a 36-month term copier lease with KMBS CO Expert Laser Services Incorporated for the Southbridge Middle High School. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's a motion and a second discussion. No discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Moving on to eight-three, vote to allow the finance director to enter into a 36-month term copier lease with Rizzo Incorporated for the Chalice Street, West Street, and Eastford Road Street, East Road Schools. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. Just for the public, we appear to be going through these expenditures rather quickly. These were discussed in great detail at the last budget subcommittee meeting, and all the questions with the committee members at that meeting were answered, so I just wanted the public to know that we're not just blowing through spending money like this, when we did sit down and discuss it at length.
Thank you.
I think, Mr. Bishop, point well-taken. Our subcommittees work at these issues before they come to us, and I think Dr. Page, the committee, does do a great job. Any other discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Unfinished business, agenda item number nine, certainly unfinished business? If not, moving on to new business, agenda item number 10. Next meeting date, school committee date, will be held Tuesday, January 12th, 2016, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers.
It's a January 5th, Mr. Chairman?
That's a typo, from the 6th to the 12th.
12th, thank you.
Katie Juris gave me a call and said it was typo.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item number 11, members forum, are there any members that have anything to talk about? Chris?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I would just like to congratulate the students of Southbridge Middle High School on their achievement for MCAS, and also for those students who will be receiving the John and Abigail Adams scholarships. That is evidence of the hard work that is going on in this school district, and I know pushing forward to the next year, these students will come back, and we will be ready to move forward and steer this district in the, in the way that it needs to go.
Dr. Page?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to take this opportunity to wish everybody a happy and healthy Christmas and holiday season, and we'll see you next year.
Mr. Bishop?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last Monday evening, I had the opportunity to go up to the middle high school cafeteria. West Street School was putting on a recognition dinner. No, was it West Street, it was Chalice Street? Oh, I get all the, I get those elementaries mixed up still. Elementary school, they put on a wonderful spaghetti meatball dinner with salad and everything. I want to thank the principal and all of that else that helped out. I know that assistant superintendent was there playing guitar with her, with her roadie, I guess it was, the director sped, Tim was up there. That was a very big crowd, it was nice to see, very positive, and I want to thank Mr. Bliss and food service that did all the cooking. They asked me to help cook, but when I got there, they told me to stay over on the side and stay out of the way, so I'm pretty good at that. But it was a great night, and I want to thank all the people who made that happen.
Mr. Jovan?
Thank you. First, I want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays to all. Second, to, to the public, I just want to let you know, please do not lose hope on the school district, there is a lot of work ahead of us. It really does take us as a community to come together to implement change and be part of the change. I have the utmost faith in the principles that we have in our district, our finance director, our superintendent, interim superintendent, assistant superintendent, as long as we all work together, and the teachers in the building. There is no doubt that we produce and can produce high-quality students that will have success. All you need to do is look any day of the students that are out there, that have graduated recently, that are going to graduate, that are going to high-performing schools and doing well. We have students that performed well on MCAS and the like. However, we cannot forget that other end of the high-needs ELL population, and as a school committee, we will sit down and work together with our staff and our administration to put best practices in to fix those strengths. So don't lose hope, let's all work together, and we can fix the problems. Lastly, I do want to thank Ms. Stewart there from the Board of Education. I really do appreciate the fact that you took your time as a board member to come out here to Southbridge to actually witness what we do as a district, because I, I think it does get lost sometimes with the actual employees of the district about the hard work that actually goes into the district. So I sincerely thank you for staying for the entire meeting and actually coming out and witnessing, and we do want to work with the board. I think you see that tonight, that we do have the same passion that the board does, but we need to work together, so thank you for being here tonight, I do appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just a quick comment, when we were there, she was one of the compassionate ones at the table, not only with the town of Southbridge, but Holyoke, we watched a lot of different things unfold at the Department of Education, and I think that the questioning that came from the committee was outstanding, and she, she just has a tremendous amount of capacity as far as her compassion for kids. And I turned around and looked at Tim and said, "Tim, there's no reason why we can't get together, we're on, we're on the same page." So, I thank you very much, nice job. Any other discussion by members? If no further, there is no executive session tonight. Moving on to open adjournment, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion and second, all those in favor? Opposed? Thank you very much for listening, school committee.